We're gonna call our commission meeting to order. Mike McCormick reminded me that it is 5:01 and he's got another meeting he wants to, he's got a report on, so. It's a first time for everything, Mike.
That's right.
Yeah, so, let's get going here. So, we wanna welcome everyone to our Cleveland County Commission meeting and we'll call commission court to order. Ms. Cobb?
Here.
Mr. Owens?
Here.
Mr. Hendrix?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Alright, we have quorum. At this time, we will place leadings to the flag. Mr. Hill, will you lead us to the prayer?
Salute, pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the liberty of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father in heaven, thank you for this people that you've given us and we thank you for your grace and your love and, Father, our hearts hold out to the city and around the communities, there's so many, so many needs and we pray that you would look on them and touch them tonight if it were your will and, and thank you, that's the conference here in this meeting, what would you use a prayer to support? In Christ's name, I ask these things. Amen.
Amen. Before you, you have a resolution I mentioned earlier, would ask you to consider adding the trafficking free zone proclamation that Ms. Matthews has asked us to consider.
I say it.
Any discussion? All in favor of adding it, say aye.
Aye.
That will be D in new business. Also, Mr. Odom has a resolution for settlement, for considering the opioid settlement and we would like to add that considered to be voted on this evening as E.
Sorry.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So, that's, we go down to E. Alright. Now, I'd like to move on to our comments from our citizens. We have Ms. Karen Mills here, she wants to come and speak to us about animal control in this field.
I made some notes, so I wouldn't say anything. I live in a rural area in Cleveland County and for years, they've had problems with stray or unleashed dogs. They've come onto our property, growled, acted aggressively to me and my family in our yard. They've stolen shoes and gloves off of our porch, chased my cat, injured her, we had a vet bill. Of course, nobody wants to claim the dogs. They use my flower beds as their bathroom. I've spoken in the past to some of my neighbors that, that I knew owned some of the dogs and that was aggressive to Caitlin and, um, she just told me, knocked a little bite off and, you know, I'm not sure how she meant for me to do that, but I really don't wanna shoot an animal. But this neighbor also had, has some dogs that, I think they usually keep up, but sometimes they get out. They also had a donkey in their pasture and my, my owner daughter witnessed their dogs taking the donkey down and killing it. Um, but they denied it, which they don't wanna own up to having mean dogs, I guess. But we've talked to the sheriff and the deputies on at least four occasions, I think their hands are tied because the county has a leash law. I understand the state does, that, um, we don't have facilities or officers to handle the problems. You know, I've, we've been told by officers to protect your property and your belongings and your family and, you know, and I'm assuming that maybe to shoot the dogs, that I really don't wanna start a war with neighbors. Um, we need a solution. You know, I'm not the only one in, in the house that's problem. We've talked to a lot of neighbors that do all over the county and I just wonder, what can we do as a county?
We have on the agenda, not like going forward, is called self-government government. It will allow us to enforce some law there, but it is a process that we have to go through. But this may be part of the public solution that I know of, but we need people to back this self-government government. They don't need it, but we're trying to come in here and just make laws against the people. It's not just, it's noise, fake smoke alarms, animal control, there's several things on there, but there's still a process that we'll have to go through, it still has to go out to the public. But this self-government government, in my opinion, is the closest thing that we can get to it, but we just really need people to support it.
What, what does it mean? Resentance or?
No, it does not.
Because I know.
If you don't.
For you.
If they pass this, they actually passed this four years ago before that time and it could only, it has to be voted on by the public and it will be on the November ballot on the, in the general election. It was voted down last time by the people of the county and it can be brought up every four years. So, if the commission, if they pass this tonight, it would be on the November ballot, November ballot coming up, the general election. If it passes, then it will give the commission the authority to start, to start the process of limiting some things that would be, you know, like noise or lease law and things of that nature. Mr. Odom, can you for me put with it?
Yes, sir. There are a number of areas. Traditionally, Alabama has been referred to, we hear about home rule and the legislature has retained most of those powers, has not given those powers to counties. However, about five or six years ago, it went through the legislature to approve this Alabama limited self-governance, which is certain powers can be granted to the counties dealing with animal control, wastewater, sewage waste, mobile homes, that sort of noise and ordinances. If passed by the people on the November ballot, it would give the county the authority to establish ordinances dealing with those different areas without having to go through the legislature to have a local law enacted. Otherwise, we have to go to the legislature to ask them to enact anything for us. So, it's very, very constrained and all of that is going out on the ballot when the time comes.
Thank you, thank you for coming. Thank you Caitlin for coming. Next, we have Mr. John Redson. He wants to come to speak about the timber business and the timber tax.
Okay. This is a little bit old hat for all of you and for me too. Conditioning roads and keeping them up and I wish the engineer in here, cause he is a key person, it seems like that. Has too many of the things that goes on in Cleveland County in his basket and it seems that it probably has so many that you can't do any of them well, I don't know if that's true though. But, last year, and I spoke to y'all before about the roads and getting upgraded and all that, I didn't get much success out of that engineer. And if it were me, I would change his job description so that he would either do his job or we'd get another engineer. That's the way I look at it. And I've learned some more since that time and I got a thing on the back there, but we had some roads that I didn't know about and I almost found them accidentally, I guess you'd say. But we do have a checklist that covers all these things I've been talking about and if the checklist is used, the roads can be taken care of. But I did learn a little more, I went to the woods and talked to the loggers and I wondered about why they get stuck with a bill for fixing roads and I found out it's the way the people that own all these woods and trees, they put a section of the timber up for sale and then somebody buys it and they own those logs and according to SB 409 they were, that's in effect, the one that owns those trees when they enter the road is responsible, any damage could look. That's, I wrote down here, it was kinda a trick they employ, but I think the people that actually own this forest helped develop this route because they knew they had a way of renting and they sell the trees, they never have to keep up any roads and if I got down there at the bottom, I'm not so sure that they pay a business tax, which logging is a big business in the state of Alabama and any large business gets paid a portion of the business tax and I'm not so sure that that gets done. But I wish the engineer, because really what I had to say affected him a lot.
Do you know, I know you've done boots for timber companies before. How do they pay their?
This is what their council did, is, and we have to hold them to it, is that they have to put gravel out before they start their job, before they go out, before they ever start hauling logs out onto that road and that gravel is paid by whoever did the job.
Yes.
They, when they did a job, they include that gravel in their bid list, so they, they got the gravel in their bid list, but a lot of times, they don't spend that money, so they don't put that gravel out until we catch them or in my experience with what I've dealt with with logging in my district, is a lot of times, they don't put that gravel out until we catch them pulling out on that road and somebody calls their, you know, hands, you gotta get your gravel out. They're, they're putting in a bitchy, she, they're getting paid to put that gravel out. They're just, you know.
A lot of these, the entire road is, not a paved road, a lot of it. Where I live, it was a paved road, but after, and the logging is, all of it has disappeared almost, but one was sexy.
Now, our roads are not, they weren't designed for these type of equipment that's coming in and out. You used to, on market, we'd use down small trucks and these trucks now are hauling tons and tons and they're just, the roads are not made for it.
Now, they give the logger, or they said they do, a copy of this checklist and if somebody follows up and the conditions don't meet this checklist, then they got ammunition to say that it gets done. But I don't know, like I said, that engineer, I don't know, he may have so many jobs to do, but some of these things don't get done.
The person that owns the property gives the, the one that's legally responsible for any damage, that's what we.
The one that owns the timber, you know, if, if somebody comes on your property and buys your timber, they own the timber, so it's their responsibility.
When it owns the log?
This is the case, this is the county road, this is the county road and they're carrying out the road, so it's over.
If I own some timber and I sell the timber to somebody, then they own the timber. But if I have to get somebody to cut it and haul it to the mail, then it's my timber on the road. Whoever owns the timber, timber on the road is responsible, that's SB 409.
But now, my, the question you mentioned is, did they pay a tax or did they?
Yeah, but it's this tax.
How do they pay, how do they pay their tax on that?
It's probably the same as like a, if this is not right Jason, that it's the same as like crop, they only pay taxes on it once it's hard to stay.
So, it's like, is it like a capital gains, it's similar to that?
I don't know that I've characterized it capital gains, but it is based on crop tax.
Okay.
But once that truck pulls out on the road, the truck, the truck, the person on that truck, he damages the road because if they come across a bridge and that bridge goes in, we go after his insurance company. That's what we've done in the past, so, uh, to say who owns the timber, whoever down there gets calling that road, I mean, doing damage to a bridge or guardrails or pipes or stuff like that.
Well, you know, you'll have somebody owning timber, but then they're subbing out or contracting out to a, a hauler, a customer, a hauler, you see, you know.
If you don't have a license, you're responsible for that loan, you're responsible for the rest of the state law.
Currently, they're hauling logs where I live right now. They have ten loads today. They're making the load, the soft places, they're not really soft, but those trucks make it soft and they're starting to damage the road already and they've been on it three days. So, how they, one, one man buys all this timber, they do it in a 550 acres, one man and his company bought it, now he subs out everything else. He's got about ten different truckers hauling those logs, but they're his logs, they're not the trucker's logs. So, he's, the one that bought it, bought the timber is the one that fits SB 409, is owning the timber, so.
And does he have a permit put up down there on the property?
Permit?
Which?
He has to come back to the engineer before he starts driving.
Do you know if he has one?
He did, they do have a permit.
Okay. Are, are, do you think they're making the standard?
Are you thinking of making a standard? No, they keep the road to the road. Now, a group in there last winter, Lee forced him to come in and put gravel, put some on the gravel, but the gravel might have solved the problem because of the heavy trailer for making trucks and hot load, you know, holes and.
Last year, the road got damaged and I went through Mr. Hill and he went through the engineer and I went and we never got the job done and that, it's in here, how much work I did and I kept that load up all winter and most of the past summer myself. And one time, the engineer told Mr. Hill that they were gonna put two loads of gravel in there, I said no, and where I live, I work outside a lot and everyone has to come by, so, so I, I almost say everything goes on and they did haul two loads of gravel, but they did not put it on that hill that I've been keeping up at length.
See, I know, and you know, we talked about this before, is that it's like, I have a couple of loggers that will want the gravel out until you go out there and tell them, you know, you gotta put gravel out. They know they have to have gravel out, but they will not put that gravel out until you, until they're actually called or you tell them. But my thing is, why can we not start fining them when they don't abide by the regulations?
SB 409.
Until they're fined and, and some, some abides been in it, until you get the pocket rule, it's never gonna change.
Very expensive in SB 409. Now, step six on here is critical to the roads that people have to drive, I put a stall about it. That's when it's not functional for school buses and ordinary drivers, helping car. If this inspection is done and it's deficient and they don't do it, then you can fine. And you could inspect the road every week if you want to, don't say how often.
And a lot of our local laws, they do it, they'll put their gravel out, they'll get their permit. It's, a lot of times, it's the ones that come in and they just ignore it until they're, until you catch them and you say, you got your permit. I went into a lot in my district and I had the same logger and he knows I have to travel that road and he literally would not put gravel out.
Then they got their equipment there, correct?
Yeah.
What you need to put, I think they're able to do is to say what you think, and then you say, well, until you get your permit, you can't do it no more.
Oh, yeah.
What you need to do is make it any vague before they gotta set their head in the water for thirty days, a couple of times like that, they give them a warning.
Exactly, that you have to give them.
I think, I believe you could, I think they can be fined like five hundred dollars.
Right.
But that's enough, I mean, now that is, it's not.
But that's a lot of gravel. I mean, with your.
Yeah, if people ask you five thousand dollars, they ain't get somebody's pension.
One of the drivers, five hundred dollars plus, I mean.
I'm asking just that they start putting the gravel in and get their permit and untie the road. It's not, we don't wanna stop them from logging, you know, you know, we want their logging because we are, our county is big timber. We just want them to take care of our property, take care of our roads and make it safer for people driving.
This is kind of Route 84, is that right?
Yeah.
And so, has he gone out to look at it lately, do you know?
I haven't talked to him recently, but I've talked to him with, and it's a never-ending thing, the way I see it.
I think you guys could tell him how often to inspect the roads. We got the procedures, it's been effective since 2010, it's a Cleveland County procedure. So, get him to inspect the roads and then he's got, I mean, and initially take care of our thing. Of course, last year is not a good example of that because we got with an engineer and nothing happened, it just didn't happen.
Thank you, Ms. Redson.
This logging combined with check list, you'll probably remember mine as it was prior to the county office, all the loggers agreed to this. This, this was something made out of all this back.
Well, you know, before you guys come into office, there's a tiring and then it became a state problem with the US Department, I mean, that US Department should be the state, the forestry and all that got involved and it was watered down a little bit. I mean, you had come, that makes a compromise and I'm not saying.
Most of this was it, I mean, this is what they said, this is one thing.
That's what they agreed to.
And it's not like they're asking, and most of our local loggers that I've talked to, they have no problem with this.
So, this.
First of all, the timber, timberlands don't play the property tax, they play very little property, yet the county has to maintain the road and the driveway and just like we do by here, well, not sure, here, maybe, but, well, plus, we get a little sales tax off the timber, but we don't get near enough money to maintain the road from this timber bit. And in my opinion, the timberlands should not be classified as farmland, you know. Now, raising food, meat and so forth and timber, not say anything, you don't need timber.
Well, of course, each of these groups have large lobbying groups, like we have, you know, ACCA is our lobbying group and they have, and there's always compromise, you know, give and take, but if, you know, if there's anything we can do, and I guess we can talk with Lee and see if any more can be done, of course. It's winter time and then, we also know when it's raining and wet, that they can't work in, across the state line, cause they got a little bit tougher laws over there, right? Is that?
Yes, but the laws, I mean, I can tell you that there's still logging going on across the line, but they're held accountable. Like if they get, if the mud take on the road, they have to, they have to clean those, it's like a little.
Brush.
Brush, they have to clean that road off. You know, and over here, it specifically says that the road has to be safe. Clots of mud on the road, a lot of it is not safe, somebody hits that and it's off the road. So, really, we have basically the same laws over here, we just got to hold them more accountable for them. And as far as logging, you know, we need logging, I mean, now, our state, Alabama's a state of logging, I mean, that's what we are again, we get a lot of other items from the logging, it's not just, I mean, it's, it's people's jobs, it's, there's a lot that comes in logging, so.
Yes, sir.
We have another one, but did, like, our state locker comes over here, I got one for Canada's logging in my district, do they come to your office without business licenses?
I'm not aware that they do.
Should they?
I don't know. I was at that, I was at their harvest in June.
You know, and I'm just, you know, a contractor that was doing work over here would have to get a, you know, a state license, you know, you can give it to any county, but it would be a state county license, but I'm not aware of any timber.
They put a guard line, they make it stronger.
Do you think any of that? Um, it's just something we need to think, think of and.
It just makes more count.
Alright, let's, at this time, we'll move, move forward, I don't think we have any officials here, awards, presentation, I would like the commission to, I would like the commission to, and I'm sure you would join me in, in saying thank you to Rochelle, our, the lady who's served in the veterans affair, Rochelle Osborn, if we could get, maybe somebody could say something about the county commission, appreciate her and put it in the paper, that would, everybody's good with that, right?
Ryan, can we do a plaque or something and help her become?
I don't know that we can buy, buy a plaque, we can all go in together and buy a plaque.
Can, I mean, I, yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Could we do something?
Yeah, and buy the plaque the next week, yeah.
And help her become?
If the five of us get together afterwards and we all pitch in and see about, find out what our cost would be, we'll all pitch in, do her plaque, cause she is, she is well respected by many veterans and has been a really a jewel for all of our veterans near and far, so. We would like to recognize her and I think this is her last one, so. Uh, we have no scheduled public hearings, consent agenda, everybody have a chance to look at the consent agenda?
It's on.
Everything is in addition, okay?
How many votes is that?
A second.
We have a motion by Mr. Hendrix to pass it and a second by Ms. Cobb. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. And that included the, the local referendum that will be, this Limited Self-Governance Act, so that, we'll put that in, I'll get started and that will be on the November ballot, yes.
Judge, if you need me, the approved language that I prepared last time, I'll be happy to help you.
Did you help us with that last time?
Yeah.
Great, great. Yes, sir, look, I'm happy.
Just let me know.
Yes, sir, I'll need your help on that. Moving on to new business. New business IMA, whereas Cleveland County is home of the red eye mask, the fierce creditor that is an indicator that, that streams are relatively pollution-free and have And have pertaining their wild character. And whereas the native fish coalition, along with several government and nonprofit agencies, wish to promote, protect, and educate the public about these unique native species and the waters where they reside. And whereas Clever County Commission wishes to support those groups with this endeavor. Now therefore be resolved that the Clever County Commission supports this ongoing effort by agreeing to add their logo mark on all signs erected and it supports erecting signs at those public areas within Clever County deemed appropriate by the probate judge with the understanding that no cost shall be incurred by the commission. Uh, I think you made the first, we second. Okay. Any discussion?
Trace, can you have the change?
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. New business, item B. Whereas Clever County is home to a portion of the Chief La Daga rail trail that is a great resource, um, of ecotour, ecotourism for the county, with over a half million people utilizing the over one hundred miles of it annually. And whereas the Clever County Commission wishes to promote, protect, and educate the public about this great outdoor resource. And whereas the Clever County Commission wishes to support those groups, organization, events that promote this ecotourism resource. Now therefore be resolved that the Clever County Commission supports this ongoing effort by supporting the Chief La Daga Run on May twentieth, twenty twenty-two, agreeing to add their logo, our trademark, and other in-kind support as determined by the probate judge with the understanding that no donation or financial contribution shall be incurred by the commission. Ms. Cobb, Mr. Hend, Mr. Owens, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. New business, item C. Whereas Clever County receives the simplified seller's use tax, the SSUT money collected by the Alabama Department of Revenue. And whereas the Clever County has recently passed a resolution to increase employee pay through a pay study plan. Whereas the cost of the pay increase is substantial, is a substantial burden on the county. And whereas the burden of the pay increase payroll will likely continue to be issued in the future. Now therefore be resolved that the Clever County will use the SSUT collected to supplement the cost of employee pay increases payroll. Ms. Cobb makes the motion. Owens makes the second. Any discussion?
Uh, I thought this was just coming from one time, is this as continuous using the money towards our payroll?
Yes.
So it's a never ending.
Ready to vote? Any other discussion? All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Do you hear aye? Any votes?
No, I guess.
You vote.
No, I'm, no, I'm opposed, I'm voting yes, sorry.
Okay. We have four ayes? Okay. Motion carries. New business, item D. Whereas PPM Consulting is performing ongoing work to clean up a previous fuel spill at the county barn. And whereas there were wells drilled to facilitate testing of groundwater contamination. And whereas some of the wells were on private property close to the shop. And whereas the county commission is interested in the purchase of this property. Now therefore be resolved that the commission is tasking attorney Jason Odom to investigate the property for possible purchase as it has previously had a lien against it. Mr. Hendrix makes the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Owens makes the second. Any discussion? All, you got.
We got Justin, and we already done some research on this.
If it's the same piece of property, I recall previously, there was a lien in place that would have to be satisfied before he purchased it to go forward. But I'm not a hundred percent certain it's the same piece of property.
Seems that we do, I, I'm, I'm sure there is a, I think, a Medicaid, a Medicare lien on.
The, the one that I looked at previously was a Medicare.
Yeah, that's right.
So I think the commission is wanting to know what, would it, what, is there a person that we can contact or how could we go out purchasing it?
The Medicaid lien would have to be satisfied in Alabama Medicaid's, uh, office.
So do you have a contact that has?
I do.
Okay, all right.
I've reached out with them previously to confirm the existence of the lien.
Okay. So our next process would just basically to go forward and pay for it, maybe in the next meeting.
Well, I, I can certainly do some additional research to find out the exact amount that's remaining.
Okay. Any other questions? Any other discussion? All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. New business, item A, whereas the county previously had carryover funds left in the general funds at the end of the fiscal year twenty twenty. And whereas the Clever County Commission decided to allow the funds to be used for road servicing projects on County Road five thirty-three and County Road forty-three to County Road forty-nine off Highway forty-six, whereas the funds were not used within the fiscal year ending in September twenty twenty-one. Now therefore be it resolved that the Clever County Commission approves the modification of the county engineers budget for four hundred and fifty thousand, which will be used for the specific road projects approved by this resolution. Okay, Mr. Hendrix, Ms. Cobb?
I have to clarify, that's second line there. It's County Road forty-three from Highway forty-six to Highway four, uh, a sort, Ms. Williams, there.
What is that?
It's actually funds that was already, that we actually, that was funded on last year. It's just, he's just done the job and he's just being transferred. So the project was already approved, we're just now transferring the money.
Right. So you'd like to make an amendment basically to this resolution, so it's.
It says County Road forty-three to County Road forty-nine off Highway forty-six. Well, it's County Road forty-three that had worked on.
Mm-hmm.
And it's one County Road forty-nine to Highway forty-six. The whole road is getting done, it hasn't been funded. So it's sort of, it's sort of just.
I'll just, I actually copied that from what we, from the last one.
Oh, yeah.
What would fix it, Terry? Would it be County Road forty-nine?
County Road forty-three from County Road forty-nine to Highway forty-six.
He has to amend that. Are you okay with that amendment, Ms. Cobb? Did you get, you get that okay, Ms. Moore? Okay.
My thing is just making people aware that it was a project that was approved last year, it's not something that's been approved.
Right. All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to D, uh, when we added this resolution that, uh, Ms. Debbie Matthews brought to us and, uh, trafficking free zone proclamation. Whereas the county of Cleveland seeks to enhance public welfare, protect public safety, and promote human flourishing for all residents and visitors by de, by declaring that freedom from human trafficking is a fundamental human right. And whereas human trafficking is a form of modern day slavery in which victims are forced to work in various forms of exploitation, including debt bondage, forced marriage, labor, and commercial sex exploitation of adults and minors that are induced through forced fraud or coercion. The county of Cleveland, Alabama, is committed to ensuring that our community is prepared to recognize the signs of human trafficking. And whereas the risk of human trafficking have increased during the COVID nineteen pandemic. Economic turmoil, financial hardships, isolation, and the shuttering of schools and other programs have resulted in an increased opportunities for human trafficking, particular online, and resulted in fewer places for victims to report exploitation and fewer chances for the abuse to be recognized. And whereas the World Games two thousand Birmingham is an international sporting event that will bring thousands of athletes as well as countless tourists and media, and media to the Birmingham metro area. And whereas an increase in tourists seeking entertainment, including commercial sex, increase the potential risk for exploitation of human trafficking. And whereas due to its isolation nature, many individuals remain unaware that trafficking is a threat to their neighborhood, families, and children. The first step in elimination, human trafficking in our county is to educate others. I guess that should read eliminating. We must work diligently to ensure that all frontline industries, educators, and first responders are aware this issue and how to spot it. And whereas we will continue our efforts to make the county of Cleveland a trafficking free zone by combating the human trafficking of our children and vulnerable adults and mitigating the associated public safety, economic, and health risks to our community in collaboration with child trafficking solutions, projects, and other anti-human trafficking organizations by combating labor trafficking, servitude, and commercial sex exploitation through comprehensive education of our staff, implementation, and enforcement of a zero tolerance policy against any act which may support human trafficking and support collaborative, community-based solutions across a continuum that includes prevention, recovery of victims, and prosecution of perpetrators. Ask, and ask all citizens in the county of Cleveland to join us in promoting a shift away from the culture of tolerance toward human trafficking. Be it resolved that I, Ron Robertson, by virtue of the authority vested me as the chairman of the Clever County, Clever County in the state of Alabama, do hereby proclaim January twenty twenty-two as Human Trafficking Awareness Month and that the Clever County Trafficking Free Zone encourage all residents to join us in raising the visibility of this crime and become more informed about ways to prevent and recognize and to respond to potential victims of human trafficking in our community. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. You want to copy that? There's a few titles in there.
You said it kinda.
Next, uh, resolution, I'm gonna let Mr. Owens read, and is considering the resolution for settlement on the opiates.
Whereas the Clever County Commission previously authorized joining litigation over opioid abuse and deaths in Clever County as a part of a nationwide opioid epidemic. And whereas the commission retained the services of the Beasley Allen Firm through its county attorney to prosecute these claims. And whereas the state of Alabama has reached a settlement agreement with Indo Health Solutions Incorporated and Indo Pharmaceuticals Incorporated to resolve the suit against the Indo defendants. And whereas Clever County's estimated portion of such settlement will be twenty-seven thousand two hundred and eleven dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the Clever County Commission approves joining in the Indo settlement and authorizes the chairman to sign all necessary documents to effectuate the joining of said settlement.
Mark.
Second. Any discussion?
That's just the two companies. There were quite a few companies in the hall, so.
These are the first two to fall.
They're doing ninety-nine, do they accept, accepted or not accepted?
Yes, sir. If we don't accept it, it goes back into the pool and be divided among the other counties and states.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Reports from staff. Ms. Cobb? Okay. County engineers absent this afternoon. Uh, Mr. Owens, you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Old business, we, um, apparently there was a something table concerning Plan C, uh, until January, but we had a special committee where we ended up voting on Plan C, I think. I don't, do we, in your opinion, we need to do anything or just let it stay or close it out?
With it being on the table, if there's not a motion to remove it from the table, it does.
Okay. Do we have a motion to remove it or is there anything you want to do?
Or if it's already discussed.
Correct.
Okay. The, the next thing was the ventilation project is tabled until February. Is that, was that yours?
The what?
Ventilation.
Yes. I don't know what, what anybody, what government has been to. I've got plenty of it in there.
Okay. All right. Discussion items by chairman and commission. Any, any of you commissioners have anything? Ms. Cobb, you have anything you?
The only thing that I want everybody to be aware of, that we have a, um, a program here that's offered in Cleveland County for, um, people with, to get their GED. And we need to encourage and let people out in the county know that that program is still offered here in the county. Uh, that, because I think they've only got three that signed up and I hate for us to, you know, leave that program. That's through gas and state.
Where's it being taught at?
It's at the, um.
Department of National Building.
Okay.
Department of County. And so we just need to let people, I'm gonna put it on my Facebook page, I'll share it. Where's to give as much information out. It's not just that, it's, um, it's, um, low income, um, courses at air study. The access study. There's a lot that they all work.
Okay.
We just, you know, maybe, this is opportunity for them to hire.
Okay. Mr. Owens, do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Retired? Retired? All right. Uh, what, I, I do want to ask a question and I know, I'm, Ms. Cobb would know, I'd be aware, so. Right now, the county owns this portion of the building, however, we have a lease agreement with JSU. And all that's still going on, right? And they're paying basically an expense, not necessarily a lease, but basically their portion of electricity based on the square footage. And if we rent out, of course, we have access to this because it's not used that much, but the renting, to rent it out for different events, you have to go through JSU, right? Okay. Just going over that. All right.
We have to at least get their authorization.
Have to get their authorization, okay.
As you pay and part of the sewage repair company. Well, that does, that could have, what they do is they give us a allotment that we draw from during the year. Uh, you know, it was, it didn't turn out to be as bad as we thought as far as getting that thing back up and running. Uh, Terry's supposed to be back out Thursday to evaluate and I'll just come try to. Which I guess if we could use our own equipment, but they just gonna have to dig and level that pipe up from one tank to the other. That's, that's what's going on as far as not letting the sewer run into the tank. It's, it's pushed up so by the height of the pipe, it's just standing in water. So that's really what it run out like it should. Uh, I talked to him and I think it's gonna be under the seventy-five line to be comfortable. And, uh, he's also going to add a, a four to six inch pipe to take all the rainwater away from that area that's that's standing on those lids when we have big rains. That's what happened last time is all the rainwater, uh, went into the system and overloaded it. So we're gonna fix it where that won't happen again.
That'd be good. That'd be great.
So as far as the system, it's probably the first time since the building been open, it's run proper. It's run correct. Is it not run correct? So, so we got it going, we just need to keep it going.
As far as JSU, I think they pay, uh, just based on an average cost of power bill and things of that nature here. So, but it runs around twenty-two thousand, I think, okay. Seems like that's what, I remember, but we do that contract with them every so many years, so.
What you tell them? I think it's in your contract, it's in the same contract.
Right. So.
But it's getting pretty close, two thousand, this year it should be at twenty-two. I think it was staying at two thousand and twelve, correct? And they seem like they have a little bit more activity up here now with them than what was in the past.
Uh, concerning, uh, Ms. Osborne, I'll, I'll. Ms. Osborne, I'll, I'll check on the plaque and see about.
Just find out a bit of the wall.
And I'll give you all individual. You have, if you think about how, something short, you have any idea if you've been in the retired military?
I'll be happy to know if you, if there's something specific you want to do.
Yes, or Mr. Flaner, which probably can do that. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd like a motion.
Second.
We stand adjourned.